All right, welcome. It's three o'clock in the afternoon on October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. This is a meeting of the Board of the Oneida County Commissioners. We are meeting in the Commission Chambers in Vernal, Utah. We have today Wendy Long with the prayer, Glenna Fulbright with the pledge. And if you would please remember, if you haven't, to sign in before you leave or silence your electronic devices so they don't go off during our get-together here. I'm really glad I said that. It was on Wendy.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the many blessings that Thou has given us and we're thankful for this day. We're thankful that we could gather together today for this meeting and we ask Thy blessings to be upon those leaders in this meeting that will make decisions this day. We're thankful for our community and for our county and we ask that Thou will bless those that dwell here and enjoy the freedoms that we have. We also ask a special blessing to be upon our armed forces and those that fight for freedom for our country and their families. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one of my favorite times. We get to meet new employees for the county, even though they don't want to be recognized. Please come forth, start with whoever you want to. Jenny, you're fine to start with because she's sitting there turning red.
Absolutely.
Come on up.
You don't have your speech prepared?
Jenny Byrd, Purchasing and Grants. We just hired Erica. She's the new purchasing and grants admin assistant for our office. She started last month, September, and she comes with five years of office experience and she's already finding all of our mistakes and cleaning up all of our files. So she's doing a great job.
Does she live around here?
She's, yeah, local.
Get up here and tell us about yourself a little bit. Don't be bashful.
What do you want to know? I grew up in Vernal and I just started with the county about a month ago.
Good enough for me. Okay, welcome.
Just a note, I'm going to steal you from her.
This is Dale Doherty. I can't say that last name. He's our new maintenance tech up at the, up at the Western Park. Jane Rook, and she's our new ice rink seasonal help down at the ice rink. So we're happy to have both of them on and both of them adults, so that's really nice. And I have told them to be scared of you guys, so we're all good.
Well, tell us about yourself a little bit. You can ice skate.
No.
You and I'll get along just fine on that ice.
Moved here from Toilla three years ago.
Well, welcome.
And this is my home now. I've got my kids here, my grandkids.
Great.
I love it, love my new job.
We'll talk to you in six months on that part.
We love our new boss. She's great. Everybody knows who I am. I mean Willis was my neighbor at one time. He grew up, well, that's what was my grandma's house across the road from where his house is now and his parent, his in-laws are right there. John, you probably pulled me over a couple of times back in the day. I mean, I went to high school with your sister Yalene, Sherry, Cricket's my best buddy. I just love Sherry and everybody knows me, so, and I'm back over in Vernal now, so I had to get a job in Vernal.
All right, a new person to the community.
Yes, so, yeah, I don't know if you want me voting over here or not, John.
Well, welcoming. Glad y'all were coming to work with us.
You know where the party's going to be down at the ice rink now, so.
Yes, yes, we'll have party there.
Come on down.
Oh, Matt?
All right, we've got Camille Erickson here. She started, she's part-time for community development, helping with building permits and answering phones and questions as people come into the counter, so. She also started, I think, last month as well, so.
Have you had any problems with her? She's armed and dangerous. I'm a little nervous about that.
We're working with HR already, so I'll let her kind of tell you about it.
Thank you. Pull the microphone down so we can hear you. There you go.
Born and raised in Vernal. You all know my brother. Everybody's like, oh, you're Derek's little sister. Yes, I am Derek's little sister. And then you probably know a lot of my family because my family's around here, like the Huntings and the Padre Mios, if you know any of those, but yeah, I have deep roots here in Vernal.
So you had a hard time growing up because every time you did something, mom and dad knew about it before you got home, yeah?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, welcome.
For sure, yeah.
Looking forward to working with y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? How about that guy in the shirt right there in front of me there? Isn't he a new kid? Okay, we'll call for approval of the minutes for October twenty first and October twenty second.
I only had one question and I'm sorry, I just got the question, or I would have came to you sooner, Sherry, but on the, when we were doing the escape taxes, the first item number, I thought it would be, the last two digits should be twenty eight. It's like, I'm sorry, I don't have it with me right here in front of me, but in my office, they were numbered like twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty at the end of the numbers, and there were two twenty nines. I believe the first one is supposed to be twenty eight, the first serial number on that list. That's the only correction I noted. Other than that, if there's not anything else, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the correction.
With the correction. Any further discussion or comments? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Wilkins, the new guy.
You got a few more years.
Commissioners, I have warrants from August, October twenty third, amount of five hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. A few here I want to point out on it. First one is a Observian Inc., forty-five thousand, that is our annual email invoice for that one. There's also a check to Oneida Basin Association of Governments for another one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty for Lucky Acres. And then we had a check to Valcor for asphalt that we went through about three or four weeks ago and Zion Spink called us and said they'd found it on the dark web. It had been stolen and was out for sale, so we did what their recommendation was. We went through and voided that and, and positive pay and got rid of it. So we've reissued that to Valcor. And then we have a check to Verco Inc. for thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven for new furniture for the library. And that was, and everything else, just normal bills.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, did we do, what do we do though in the future for things like that check that got out on the dark web? They stole it through the mail?
Somehow, we don't know how, how Zion's even found out about it, but they called us, said, we found this check out there. So we just voided it, went through their process of making sure it didn't go through and we have reissued it to them. And we've contacted the company also.
Other than that, I would make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any tax matters today?
I do not have any tax matters.
Okay, we have no tax matters? Mr. Wilkins, Resolution ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, R. one, U.SIP representative, representatives.
Yes, Commissioners, this is the annually, we have to appoint a representative for Oneida County to serve as the voting member on the Utah County's indemnity pool. I currently serve on that board and I'm requesting at this time that I be appointed by you guys to be the voting member for the county with Commissioner John Larson as the alternate, and this is for the annual meeting that will be held on November twenty first.
Okay. Any questions or comments or concerns? Call for a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution ten dash twenty-eight dash two zero two five, R. one, in appointing Mike Wilkins as U.C.I.P. representative, voting representative, and John Larson as alternate.
All right, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. For those that you don't know, U.SIP stands for Utah County Indemnification Pool. That's our insurance company. Okay, next one, Resolution ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, R. two, executive county officer salary adjustments. Ms. Craven?
Did you want to stand up?
We're just recently emailed over to me. Hi, I'm Tanya with Human Resources for Oneida County. This has been a topic that's been going on for quite some time. I want to just recognize, we had a document that was provided to the Commission during a work session that showed the inflation rate from two thousand and fifteen until now comparing, comparing the salaries of one of our elected officials. And they showed that currently that salary is forty-two thirty and to stay within purchasing power with inflation, that salary would rate then at fifty-seven fifty-two, which is still under the, even the fifteen percent that the elected officials had reasonably came forward and requested. So just utilizing BOSS as the retirement financial facility that offered that information, I just wanted to show that the request that the elected officials are asking for, for those increase, is not beyond what inflation would have shown had they continued to receive increases throughout the years incrementally. I know that budget-wise, we may have some constraints, but I just wanted that to be on the record that what they're asking for is an astronomical and is, is well within reason if they would have been included in those increases from that time. And then we do have multiple resolutions and opportunities to ask the Commission to make a vote so we would know today how they're going to move forward with those salaries so our elected officials are appointed and our elected, elected appointed department heads all know where their salaries are going to be able to move forward.
Thank you. If I can jump in.
Okay, yes.
So Commissioners, you just need to make a decision on what to do with that request. We will finalize that resolution according to what you decide today. A public hearing was held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this is in accordance with Utah Code seventeen where the compensation for executive officials is decided annually by the Commission. So this is the time for, for that decision.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I got a few comments. I'd like to address some questions given to me by the public, come in the form of a letter and asking for my input and giving their input as well. The first, there, there's several, I'm not going to address everything, but I, I want to address these key points. Say the, in, the idea of increasing your own pay after less than a year in office is frustrating and disheartening. We assume that you and your colleagues knew about the salary increase. So we were, we were asked and informed the same time that everyone else was in a public meeting, in work session. The fact that they're saying, I ask for my pay to be increased is not true.
No, that's not correct.
I, I did not ask for anything, neither did Commissioner Norton or Commissioner Larson. We listened to an employee's request, the same as I would listen to any other request or statement from any employee or a citizen in the county. I think it is, is respectful to do that. I will continue to do that. With the information given there, we've had many, many discussions and lost lots of sleep, quite frankly, over this topic. They did go on in this letter to say that they could support a modest cost of living up to three percent, and they say that that would be reasonable and understanding. This letter is, is titled Concerns Regarding Compensation and Physical Responsibility From Concerned Citizens of Oneida County, whoever that may be. With that said, I hope everyone in the county, whether you're here or whether you're listening, knows that, that I am available and I think I can say we are available and, and we will talk to you. I mean, you know, if you, you got concerns, reach out, we'll do that. So, and that's, that's, and I've had many of these, but this is one in particular that asked me to respond, looking forward to it. They went on to address other, other concerns within the county that we'll deal with in another time. I think it was very interesting to me, I had one regarding this topic, I had one gentleman reach out to me, he's ninety-four years old, he's a veteran. What he thinks a good salary is for an annual salary, I feel like would be a really nice monthly salary. They don't have a lot, but this was his concern. He said he went to, in the military and at the core of, of serving was to ensure that people all over the world could be treated fairly. And he said his brother died and we're establishing the opportunity for equality and respect in society. So that, that, coming out, I mean, he wasn't well, just coming out of the hospital and, but he thought it was important enough that he expressed that to me. And it was, it was extremely powerful and humbling coming from a veteran like that. I did have some of my own experiences and I won't go, go into it as I, as I sought, trying to find answers and solutions on, on, on this, how I could be respectful to the employees still respecting the citizens and their decisions. And, and in my seeking, I have a, a book here that's my county book that I've wrote for the last three years, and this is, this is one, but I'm just going to pick out a, a few key words. This, this came into me in the night and I got up and wrote it down and went back to bed and then looked at what I wrote in the morning. But it, it had the key words that, that I wrote that I felt impressed was, was around choosing, it was around disrespect for the Constitution and our form of government, being ungrateful. Then there was words like respect and gratitude. And, and so that kind of set my mind set in motion. I will say that I had a conversation with someone that I was a, a very good friend of mine, he still is, I just found out we're on a different page, and that's fine, I can agree to disagree. But he, he came to me and this was a little bit ago, when he made the comment, he said, basically Willis, you're out of your league. He said, this isn't about God and church, it's about money. At the beginning, I, I felt hurt, I was betrayed and really somewhat confused by the comment of that. It, it didn't take me too long to start finding my way again and going to find one of those other key words, again gratitude. Again, I can agree to disagree, that's not a problem. But as I, as I thought about it more, it convinced me that I knew that I was on the right track and on the right side, that everything is about God and church, church being His people, His children, not only the, the citizens, but also the employees and, and everyone here. And so we get back to that word, it's a, it's a matter of respect. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to, to being respectful, being grateful, and I will, was this noted there, there's a few options and I do not feel like that, I do not feel like that I have to give anything as far as this goes, but I, I do want to, to be respectful to all opinions in the community and that can't be all this way or all that way. How do we mesh that together? And, and the comment of that, that old gentleman, the veteran says, just be fair, be honest to everyone and do the right thing every time. So that's my intent. I'm interested to hear what the other Commissioners have to say.
Thank you for sharing your remarks.
All right, I do want to point out one thing that there was, one elected official that brought this to us, but he was representing a whole bunch of elected officials. He was just the, nice way of putting it, the oldest official. So it wasn't just a one man, it was the elected officials. Any comments, thoughts?
I did a lot of research and trying to ask the questions to, well, we listened to the public, first of all, in that public hearing, and I took a lot of what they said and so I did some checking and research and asked a lot of questions. I did talk to our H.R. Director about the elected officials because I know there were things pointed out that I wasn't sure about the reference in time. So we clarified that, that we did a salary survey, redid a salary survey in two thousand and twenty-three to try to bring equity to all the positions in the county, make sure they were, we felt they were being paid their value and their experience and, and so we did a lot of work on that in two thousand and twenty-three. And when I asked her if the elected officials were included in that, we had.
There was one presented from UAC at that time.
And information on elected officials and we agreed that at that time, they were being paid appropriately for the time. It's very difficult because every county is different, has different responsibilities, different job duties for the elected officials. But, so when I confirmed that and also looking at what had been given to employees, looking at inflation that was brought up, unfortunately, I don't believe the employees received what the total inflation happened over the years either.
No, they did not.
They did not. So I was just trying to, like Willis said, try to be fair and equitable with our decision and do what was right. So that's what I've looked at and have done a lot of research in trying to come to the decision, the best decision I feel like for the elected officials and the people in the community.
Okay, I've heard a lot of people saying you knew what the salary was when you hired on. If I hire on flipping hamburgers at McDonald's for seventy-five dollars a year, I would expect a raise. I would expect hopefully that somebody would look at me and say, wow, inflation's really eating his lunch. This has happened to me before, I've worked for this county for almost fifty years. When I started, I got six hundred dollars a month and that's what my rent was. That's when the oil field was booming. To this day, I have no idea how I did it with a wife and two kids, but I survived. So you can survive. But is it really being fair to the community to penalize somebody for running for an office? I don't know about everybody else, but I personally would like to have people run for office because they want to do the best they can. I don't know too many people can walk away from a big salary for four years or eight years in the middle of their career and expect to go back to work for that same corporation for the same amount of money. And yet they'll take a pay cut somewhere between sixty and a hundred thousand dollars just to come run for office. So I think a pay increase is very much demanded just by common sense. We have outstanding employees here. We are the largest rural population in the state of Utah. We have more people in this county counting on us to provide fire, ambulance service, decent roads, and we're still working on the roads, I admit that.
Always working on roads.
Always working on the roads.
Always working on the roads.
But it's a hard job. I, I can truthfully say, if you drive by this building at night, you'll find lights on in different offices with people working late with no compensation, trying to make sure they do things correctly, legally. I know our recorder's office, they make a mistake and, and just as a wild guess, let's say that Brenda makes a mistake recording a three million dollar record. If they sue us, they have a right to get nine million dollars for that mistake, three times the amount. We've got to have quality people and we've got to pay to have quality people. I've caught a little bit, all right, I've caught a lot of grief about wanting to get a pay raise. I don't think I really want a pay raise per se, but I do want people that are going to run because they can afford to run. And unfortunately, that means that a pay raise has to come forth. Now, we have discussed and discussed and discussed, and I'm sure each of us have come to our own decision on what we want to target, what percentage we want to give or how we want to do it. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm the first one and I think we should get a five percent. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm the first one and I think we should get a 5% increase, which is not that much. But I've got two other people and I need to hear from them also. Cause I'm not the deciding factor. The three of us are.
I did forget one thing. I just wanted to reiterate what I said before. I believe it was in the work session when this was brought forward, that I agree when, if they say you knew what you were getting when you ran for office. But my question was always, well, then how do you give them a raise? Because half are running in two years like now, and then half will be running again in two more years. So that's a, it's hard to split that. So we have to give a raise at some time to the elected officials. I am three fourths, almost three fourths through my term. And so I have chosen not to accept any kind of raise. That's just me personally. No matter what is decided, I will stay with what I was told I would be getting paid when I ran for this office till the next year, the end of my term.
That was my question is as the commission as a whole, um, when we do it and we are acknowledging elected officials and the legislative body can want opt out because then when they are running again, those set, set salaries, what would that look like for someone who would be running for Commissioner Norton's seat?
It's my understanding the salary would be, would be set for all of them. She does not have to accept that salary.
But someone who ran in her position then would be able, that salary could then?
Would be a salary that was set for them.
Yes. So my successor will get whatever's decided.
Okay, just making sure. I would really like to, I know that you've said five, but I, when we started this conversation, we were at 15. And then it's been five, it's been three, it's been where? And so I would request again that it might, if we're not going to stick, go with the 15 that was requested, that we negotiate and, and look at 10%.
Your thoughts? I can't do 10%. I don't, no, no, nowhere have I talked to anyone that do that. I guess you, you have a motion on the table for?
There's no motion. We're still discussing.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know if you were finished. Lauren, do we also need to recognize the, um, department heads and the appointed at that 5%? Cause we, I have a couple of resolutions. One has, uh, two separate ones coming in because of, uh, education and certification, things of that nature. And then the rest of them don't. They just state elected, appointed and department. So I just wasn't sure. I wanted to make sure when we went forward, we did it correctly.
So the, the commission is aware, the definition of executive officer. Sorry, I will just, so the commission is aware, the definition of as executive officer includes elected officials, department heads and, uh, chief deputies. So unless we want to do through, go through this again, it would, uh, be valuable to set all of those. They don't have to be the same.
Right.
I mean, this was brought up by an elected official, but so that we don't have to go through another public hearing and another resolution, it would be uh, to set all of those. There are two employees who, uh, a chief deputy and a department head has stated who did some training according to their wage maintenance plan that would bump them up. So that would, is also
Would be additional.
In the resolution. Right.
So when you, when you address that and say, we don't have to do and we don't have them to do them all the same. That goes against everything that I've felt discussed and talked, I mean, in, in the eyes of that older gentleman and and some of the conversations that I've had, uh, we treat everyone the same, fair and equitable.
So i- if, if the elected officials are behind, have not kept up with the others, department heads. I mean, that's your, that's your decision, but wouldn't it be fairness to get everybody up there to that? So that, that, that's your decision to decide what, what would be fair in your eyes.
We have not finalized the budget yet and we're close. I know that. I don't know exactly where we're at on that. As far as many goes.
Let me point something out.
I know what we did.
Wait a little bit. Let me point something out. This has always been a question. If we get a pay increase, is it going to increase taxes? The answer is no, it will not increase taxes. That requires a public hearing, uh, about a year's worth of work. So let me put that to rest. It does not increase taxes at all. Your thoughts?
I'm reading Ty Duncan's name deputy. He's looking at me. I can feel it. Do you want me to make a motion?
Silence is not golden today. All right. I'll make a motion that we increase the salary for the elected county officials, the executive branch, the UNTA County Department Heads, appointed positions effective January 1st of 2026, with the exception of the two that were mentioned. Um, one of them on a wage plan should have already got an increase. I would suggest we move back and give him that increase. So it's fair like the rest of the people, the sheriff's office. Then we have another one that excelled and went out and got an extra.
Certificate? Certificate?
Certificate. Thank you. I couldn't think of what it was.
Yeah.
I, I recommend we give him what we, uh, agreed on. And that's in addition to the 5%.
Okay.
So you're asking for a 5% across the board for all executive officers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. 5% across the board for everybody. And those two would also get that boost that they were supposed to get. Any further comments, questions, concerns?
I'm quiet over. I speak.
Okay. I'll go for a vote.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to speak. I, that's not the direction that, I mean, I'm not saying that no one's worth it. I've, I've struggled with this comment, with the comment of value. And I tell everybody, you know, you can, you have 100% right to question the value that I bring as an individual. I don't have to agree with it, but you are never allowed to question my worth. I will tell you, everyone, I am worth a whole lot more than what I'm getting paid. If you don't, if they don't feel like I'm bringing the value, that's another topic. And for me, this, this comment says here, I've, I kind of sucked my first year. I don't agree with it, but that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the feeling you get. I would, I would move to amend that motion to say 3%. And that would be my.
No, I agree.
3%?
Yes.
Okay. Motion better amended to 3% and call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So again, that has to do with all executive officials?
That has to do with all county elected officials, executive officials, department heads and appointed. With the two that we mentioned before, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With the other two? Okay. Ordinance 10222501, amending chapter 2.2, Full Historic Preservation and Museum Advisory Board in the UNTA County Code. Sonia?
Yes, um, I sit on this board and there have had, we have needed to make some corrections. Um, as we merged the two boards together, the historic preservation and the museum board, we did make some changes, but we also found that we needed to make some more. So I'll just quickly describe some of the changes that we have made in this ordinance. First of all, um, in some of the verbiage in the ordinance, it had, it still had the terminology in heritage museum. And it is no longer the heritage museum. It is the museum of UNTA County. So we corrected that to just say the historic preservation and museum advisory board. Also throughout the document, it refers to the members of the board as directors. We changed that to now reflect members. There is a part where it mentioned the appointments would be made the, as, um, the first day of July of the year in which they were to be appointed. We thought it best to bring those in line with other board members. Most of the boards, in fact, all of them, but one that I'm aware of has December 31st as the last day. And then they elect, we appoint new board members for the beginning of the new calendar year. So that was put in this as well, that to change it from the first, um, day of July to in January or as close to this month as possible. Also, if you go down to, uh, the terms of the board members, uh, it says one, it used to say one third of the board is appointed each year. Now it would say is appointed every other year. So those are staggered. Um, also, uh, the board shall adapt, adopt its bylaws. And we added that must be approved by the county commission into that as well. And there is one part where we were speaking in part, section four, part E, or excuse me, part F, where it says how the records will be kept and managed. And we needed to add that the records shall be made, the meeting records shall be made available by the secretary of the board on the Utah Public Notice website in accordance with Utah Code annotated 52 dash four Open and Public Meetings Act. There is one other paragraph that was added in section five that says the board shall have the authority to create standing committees and ad hoc committees for the study and slash or investigation of historic preservation and slash or museum issues and other museum matters as determined by the board. Um, there is, uh, just a grammatical correction where in section six where it said the ordinance's policies and procedure, and we just added the S to be procedures. In section five, oh no, section six, excuse me, uh, part J. To the extent possible within the community, two board members shall be professionals. And then it said as defined by National Park Service regu- regulations. That was the as defined by National Park Service reg- service regulations was stricken. And it just says from the disciplines of history. It goes on to say from the disciplines of history and architecture or architectural history. I believe that's, that's outlined in the historic preservation state guidelines. Also, section seven, we removed, um, the, it's the review of proposed nominations to the National Register of Historic Places. In the first line, it said the, and then we struck historic preservation and museum advisory and just made it the board. Because that's given. Um, in section seven, I guess it would be the same paragraph. It also stated the boundaries would be of the community. We struck community and made it the boundaries of the county. And at the end of that paragraph, it says the advisory board will seek expertise in this. It was a missed, uh, typographical error. It said R instead of area. So we just correct that to area. Section eight, um, we added a little bit of verbiage in the paragraph, the histor- paragraph A, the historic preservation and museum advisory board shall act in an advisory role too. And instead of other officials, we made that those specific officials and departments of government. And then we also added that have authority over them. And then it went on to say regarding the identification and protection of local historic and archaeological resources. And again, in paragraph B of that same section, we struck historic preservation and museum advisory board and just made it board. And again, it said communities. We struck that and made it counties plural in that same section B. Also in section nine, where it talked about this department head, its duties and responsibilities of the museum curator. This department head will assign. We changed will twice in this paragraph to shall instead of will. And at the end of that, also made it state that it, we took out museum, just said the board. Uh, we did that a few times throughout this document. If museum was in there, it was removed and just addressed the board. And we struck paragraph E in section nine that talked about how to keep and provide access to the minutes because that was addressed earlier on how they'll be posted on the public notice website. And in F, we struck, um, heritage in front of museum again. And then other than that, we just added, uh, the signatures of the, or the approval from the commission and the notary, a notary to that as well. And that is all of the changes.
You sure?
Uh, yeah, I think that covered all of them. If I missed anything. LeAnn Denzler and Amber Kosky are here from the board and you're welcome to speak up if I missed anything.
I make a motion that we approve as presented by Commissioner Norton. I'm going to call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Preservation grant. Jenny?
Jenny Byrd, purchasing and grants. Um, UNTA County was awarded a Utah certified local government CLG grant from the Utah State Historic Preservation Office in the amount of $20,000. Um, we will provide a $20,000 in-kind match for a project total of 40,000. Uh, the grant application was prepared by Amber Kosky and LeAnn Denzer of the Preservation Board. Uh, they will be serving as the project managers for this. And then the grants department will oversee the grant compliance, procurement and financial management. So we'll work together on that project. Um, Amber presented this during the October 15th work session. The contract's been sent to Lauren's office. He's reviewed and approved it. And now I am asking the commission for approval, this grant award contract.
May I speak?
Certainly, please.
Okay. I just wanted to commend Amber for going after this grant. She has been such an asset to the board. LeAnn Denzler is such a great support and is very knowledgeable. I've learned a lot being on this board. But, um, we're hoping as we've reestablished this board, that we will be able to enlighten the community that we're here and to be aware of historic places and buildings and things in our community. And we will work on, um, identifying those places that we would like to preserve. And go after more grants like this and work, uh, along with the museum to have. I know we have a lot of things in the museum that are great, um, I guess you'd call them artifacts for our community and people, I encourage people to please try to go in and visit the museum. Not the dinosaur museum we're talking about. It used to be called the Western Heritage Museum. It's right here on the south side of the county building. But is the, now the museum of UNTA County. There are a lot of really neat, um, large objects in that museum. And a lot of information about the history of this area. So I encourage people to do that. But this, um, we're excited to get started. And if you, we didn't mention?
I should mention, for people that weren't at the work session, it's, um, rehabilitation project.
Yes. The Episcopal Church on about 150, I think, 140 something?
226 West Main.
Excuse me.
It's the church and lodge rehabilitation.
Yes. Um, that has been in our community, I believe, since 1901. Is that correct? And, um, it is in need of some repair. And so Amber recognized that and went out for this grant and we rewarded the grant. And I have viewed the building and it, until you get up close to it, you don't realize the things that have deteriorated over the years. But we're really excited about making these, um, preservation maintenance on the building. And it's been used by the community ever since it was built. It used to be the It used to be the community gathering center, that and the lodge that was built. And the lodge was used also as um a boarding school for girls that would have, be brought to the area from, on the outskirts, and they would stay in the boarding school. And it also was used for a hospital for a short time for our valley and probably much more. But that much I've learned. And it's a really pretty historic building that we want to preserve on our main street.
Okay.
So with that.
Anything further?
Nope. I would make a motion that we approve uh this signing of the Preservation CLG Grant as presented by Jenny Byrd.
Okay, acceptance of. All right, call for a vote.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next one, Jenny, your Technology Corp.
Um I am requesting the approval of a service agreement with Amplifund at Carisoft to acquire their grant management and grant search software. This is a five-year agreement that uses a State of Utah procurement government contract. The cost for the first year is thirty thousand. That includes ten thousand dollar implementation fee. And then it's twenty thousand dollars annually after that, with a three percent increase for the ongoing licensing and support. Um the platform has two main components. The first component is grant management. So all departments and offices will have access to this software. Um the commissioners can access that as well. It'll help with um compliance, federal reporting, and we can have track workflows between the Grants Department and the offices. The second piece of this is a grant search tool. So we will be able to find more funding and we can find it quicker. Right now, if we review a notification of funding opportunity, those can be, you know, eighty, a hundred pages. And this software, they have employees that review this and then they'll send us notifications if we're looking for specific opportunities. And it's just a more centralized platform to find funding. So I'm requesting the service agreement for five years for our office to implement.
Okay, any comments, questions, or concerns there?
No.
Call for a motion?
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say that Jenny's made leaps and bounds in our Grants Department as far as finding more grants for the county and bringing more things to our county through the grants and spreading our money further. So I really appreciate the work she does there.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract. Uh I'm gonna kill that name, Carisoft Technology Corp, Amplified as Presented by Jenny Byrd.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sunrise Engineering.
Okay, I have an engineering agreement with Sunrise Engineering for forty-five thousand dollars to complete an environmental assessment for a proposed trailhead on BLM land near Jensen in UNT County. We received forty-four thousand dollars in funding from the Division of Outdoor Rec through an OHVR grant to fund this project. Um the EA will be prepared in accordance with BLM's NEPA procedures. And that will identify potential environmental impacts and develop mitigation measures as needed. So this is the first step before we can do any construction groundbreaking on federal land. So um I'm requesting the service agreement be approved.
Questions or comments?
Is this for a specific trailhead?
So the grant that's funding this, we titled it Josie Morris Trailhead. But I've been working with Mike Cook and the trailhead's that it will serve. I have a list, um I guess the trails that it will serve. Josie Morris, Musket Shot Springs Trail, Bronco Buster, Brain Rock, and Reef Trails. So those are all in that network.
Thank you.
My office did review this also and we signed off on it.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, sir.
All right, call for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the Sunrise Engineering Agreement for the Trailhead Environmental Assessment as presented.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Lance Dean, Public Defender's Office, ratification of Indigent Defense Services Contract with Julie George, Amendment two.
Thank you, Lance Dean with the Public Defender Office. Our office has an obligation to um provide representation when there are involuntary civil commitment proceedings against the Division of Services for People with Disabilities, DSPD. It's a county responsibility, um and it's a specialty uh to do this kind of representation. I already have Julie George, who is a contracted conflict attorney with uh with our office. I have Julie George that actually is a specialist in this matter. She has a contract, I believe, for Davis County and also for Weber County to do this very same thing. Her rate is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour based upon this being a specialty. So because we already had her on a conflict contract and the year's up, we decided to amend the contract. Uh Lauren Anderson was the one that uh worded this for me. Uh he's a lot better at contract wording than I am. And so what we're doing in the amendment that uh you have there, I think you have the redline version of it. Uh we're raising Julie's hourly rate, what we did at a few commission meetings ago, to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour if she's doing any criminal, criminal work. Um this uh, this one would be a hundred and fifty dollars an hour if she's doing work um representing individuals um against DSPD. So uh we're, we're asking that that would be, that would be ratified.
Or approved?
Approved, yeah.
So I'm a little bit confused. You're saying you're splitting it like she'll get paid a hundred and fifty for this specialized uh case? And then she gets paid the other going rate for the other cases?
If she, if I assign any other cases to her on the cr- straight-up criminal side, then yeah, her hourly rate would be one-twenty.
Okay.
Um which is standard for our county now. Um but if she does these, these ones, that she'll, she'll get that at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Just so that you're aware, I think that since twenty nineteen, there have been three of these cases in our county. So there's one that popped up. Um I was assigned and I uh figured out, uh you know, I contacted Julie and we worked this agreement out.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Call for a motion?
I will make a motion that we ratify the Indigent Defense Service Contract as presented by Lance Dean.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
Amendment to the horse stall agree, wait a minute, yep. Horse stall agreement. It's all yours, Mel.
Melanie Silcox, Western Park. Uh we would like to amend the horse stall agreement uh to say that no stallions will be allowed to board at the Western Park. Um we've run into some issues, especially with all the public events that we have with um the current stallions that are being boarded there. It's common for public places such as like the Western Park to not board stallions unless they have a designated area. We do not have a designated area that allows that. Um Lauren has reviewed this and we believe that this is the safest measure to take.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
No.
Call for a motion?
I'd make a motion we amend the ho- horse stall agreement as presented by Melanie Silcox.
And I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. All right, Ryan? You're on, data privacy policy.
Commissioners, I have to present uh Policy eight fifty, Privacy Program Policy. Um this policy is quite lengthy at nine pages. Um but if I can speak to the, the spirit of the policy, that is basically to um identify what a chief administrative officer is um that's gonna be over the privacy um as it goes, as it relates to county records. This policy, in a nutshell, will be responsible for what data we collect, why we collect that data, how individuals can access that data, be able to modify that data, what we can and cannot do with that data. And that, that's the, that's the general gist. Um maybe just, uh let me just read this, the, the purpose here. This policy serves to document UNT County's privacy program, which includes policies, practices, and procedures for the presiding of personal data in accordance with Utah Code sixty-three A nineteen four oh one two A and which aligns with the records management and data governance requirements provided in both GRMA and DARs. Where applicable, this policy will refer to a more specific or detailed policy, procedure, or guidance that addresses a particular practice that UNT County has developed. This policy is gonna be in its infancy and the, the duties that are in are gonna be in its infancy for a while. Uh most counties and the state have agreed that this is going to be quite the marathon, not a sprint, uh to try to implement a better privacy policy as far as counties are concerned. A lot of county government data is private record or, or public date records, excuse me. Um but there are some things that we collect that uh need to be, need to be classified, need to be put inside of a record series and determine the retention and, and what we can do with it and uh all things along those lines. So that gives a general idea of, of what this policy entails.
May I jump in?
Please.
Commissioner, so that you know, my office has worked quite a bit with Mr. Mattson and, and his office in developing this. This is required by the state that we have this in place by the end of the year. We have attended trainings on that, both my office and uh Mr. Mattson's office, to get this. So a- as he stated, there's going to be some changes with it as we go along. Uh but this needs to be uh seriously considered because we need to pass it by the end of the year. We think it's ready. We have reviewed this numerous times and worked through this.
Any, any questions, any specific areas that you would like to see? By all means, I'm, I'm all ears, so.
Any questions or comments? Call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Data Privacy Policy number eight fifty as presented.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now ordinance ten oh one twenty twenty-five, oh one, county compliance with the Utah Government Data Privacy Act, G O, G D P A. Ryan?
All right, so this is, the ordinance goes along with that policy uh in order to establish a county data privacy program in compliance with Utah Government Data Privacy Act, uh sixty-three A nineteen one oh one. Uh whereas Utah legislation has enacted the Government Data Privacy Act, G D P A, Utah Code annotated sixty-three A nineteen one oh one, to protect the privacy and security of personal data handled by governmental entities and to ensure transparency and accountability. Whereas it is in the best interest of UNT County and its citizens to comply with the G D P A by establishing a robust data privacy program. Now therefore, the legislative body of UNT County ordains as follows. Uh section one, purpose, "The purpose of this ordinance is to formally initiate and establish the privacy program in accordance with G D P A requirements to protect personal data, ensure transparency, and promote public trust." Section two, "Appointment of Chief Administrative Officer, C A O." "UNT County shall designate a chief administrative officer, responsibility for oversight and implementation of the county's Davis Privacy Program. The C A O shall oversee compliance with G D P A, implement and maintain privacy policies, serve as the primary contact for the Utah Office of Data Privacy." Section three, "Adopt privacy policies and notices." "UNT County hereby adopts and will implement comprehensive privacy policies and notices to clearly outline how personal data is collected, used, stored, protected, and managed by the county," by the county, which was just done. Privacy impact assessments, "The C A O and its designees shall initiate and oversee privacy impact assessments for all existing and new high-risk processing activities involving personal data to identify and mitigate privacy risks." Uh staff training, mandatory initial and ongoing training will be provided for all UNT County employees who handle personal data to ensure understanding of the G D P A and compliance with its privacy practices. Section six, "Reporting Accountability." "The C A O and its designees shall ensure regular reporting of compliance efforts and results to the UNT County Commission. Documentation shall be maintained and provided upon request to the Utah Office of Data Privacy." Uh effective date, "The ordinance shall take, uh take effect fifteen days after enactment and after depositing of the copy of, in the clerk auditor's office and publication in newspaper having general circulation of the county as required by Utah, annotated section seventeen fifty-three two oh eight." Any questions on that one?
Could you start at the beginning again? Just one thought, uh, Mr. Anderson, in this, we're not required to publish in newspapers any longer, are we?
I saw that. I didn't see where this said the um, this was one that was given to us by the state.
Yeah, this is a template.
I didn't see where it said it was the class, we could do the class A. Um just to be careful, I would publish this in the newspaper.
And on the internet?
We can.
Either, either or?
And on the internet.
I, I don't think it's an either or option.
So both?
When we put it on the internet, or just on our website, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, okay.
All right, any further questions, comments? I'll call for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number ten dash zero one dash two zero two five oh one as presented.
Nothing further, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
I have one thing I've neglected to say when we were talking about the um salary adjustments. Um I know one of the people that spoke in the hearing asked us to come up with a plan. And I want them to know that we are, we're working on a plan and it'll probably come forth in a policy in the near future to address the elected officials going forward and the other executive officials. So thank you for your input.
Okay, I have a comment. Uh it's that time of year again. Tax notices went out yesterday, according to our publisher or whoever does. When you get those, please look at the evaluation of your home or property and also look and make sure that you understand the water company and the school district are the ones that have raised their taxes, not UNT County. We collect the taxes, we do not levy those taxes. Those are levied by the particular offices. So when you go in, pay your taxes, please don't try to tear those ladies up in there because they've been eating bullets this week and they're starting on nails next week and you may not survive. Do we have any public comment today? Okay, give me just a minute, let me read this to you. Okay. "At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please keep your remarks to three minutes so that everyone has a chance to speak. Remember, this is a time for comment, not for debate. To make this a productive and respectful space, let's keep things civil, avoid interruptions, be mindful of the time limits. When making a public comment, please step to the microphone, state your name for the record. If you have a difficult sign last name, please spell it for our clerk. And please be courteous to those in attendance and wait for the microphone to be available before making any comment. County may not be responding to comments or answering questions. However, we value your input and will take comments into consideration. Please be aware the county may not have the power to act on some things. A total of fifteen minutes will be allocated for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes. We truly value hearing from our community. And while this portion of the meeting is limited, we welcome more in-depth conversation. If you'd like to continue the discussion, please feel free to stay after the meeting. We'll be glad to schedule a time to meet with you and talk further." All right, sir, thank you. Appreciate your patience.
My name's Don Hall. I just got some observations here. Uh and this is just coming to you from a taxpayer. And like I said in the last meeting, some of your taxpayers don't only live here, but they uh, they work out of state. And now you got a bunch here that are on fixed incomes elderly. So I guess I'm trying to kinda, kinda be that voice in that perspective. Uh as concerning this raise, uh just kinda like what happened here, without public input, we go ahead and vote the raise. That's probably how it's supposed to work. I, I guess that's how it works, but uh I, I've been in a position where, you know, you gotta just, you gotta decide on that you got hands working for you and you got, you got some very qualified hands and some, sometimes less qualified. I've had hands come to me, hey, I, I deserve this raise because uh Joe over here on this other job is getting this much and, and I've only been late five times and my uncle's a superintendent, so I, I should get that raise. uncle's the superintendent, so I, I should get that raise. He gave me a lot of, a lot of reasons why he should get it, but I also had hands that weren't just doing their job, but they were getting out and, uh, they were making the process better. If there was any way to save his project money, he didn't wander about it, he didn't ask, he just jumped in and did it. And as leaders, we were responsible to recognize that, and you got, you only got so much money, and, and everybody's gotta have a cost of living range, and nobody's got a problem with that. But if you've got a hand that's excelling, I ask you folks, what are you doing to find out, uh, whether these people are getting a raise on merit? One of the best, uh, vice presidents I ever worked for, uh, sometimes he'd disappear out of his office in, uh, uh, steamboat, and you might see him on your job, he'd be riding by with a hand on the side boom, or he'd be out there with the hands on the shovels and stuff, but he got on the ground and he found out who was doing their job, who was excelling, and who was there just to get by. And I ask you folks, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but I would, I would hope that you're taking the time to get out and find out if these people are doing their jobs, and if they are and they're excelling, then give them a raise on merit. Not everybody's do the same mu- you only got so much money. Uh, one thing as a taxpayer that bothers me, and I've asked several times, you may be do the raise, you folks may be bringing and saving us a lot of money, we don't know. I've asked several times, where do we stand with Western, Western Park or the, uh, the conference center? Is that thing making money hand over fist, or is it operating in the red? I never get any answers to that. We hear things that, in these meetings about problems in the past, about missing equipment and stuff, or, or legal problems, and we just kinda get the attitude, well, let's, let's kinda ignore it, and maybe it'll go away, and the public never hears. There's no resolution. We haven't heard about the resolutions on that or, or any accountability. So that's why it makes it kinda, it makes it tough for us when you guys, well, we deserve this raise because people over here are getting this much. That, that's great, but I wanna know what you're doing to earn it. Are you getting out and you finding out, are, are these, are these people operating their business entity? There are several here in the county. Are they operating in the most efficient manner? I haven't heard that. That would be great to hear as the public to say, hey, I kinda went out and I just kinda watched them, these guys are doing great, or, or we could make a few changes here and there. That tells us you're doing your job. That tells us that you're watching what's going on, not hearing that. So that's why, when you get these meetings, and it's kinda smart to have it at three o'clock because all the people that are working to make the tax money to pay these, uh, raises for you can't be here because they gotta work. Maybe we oughta, uh, see if we can rent the convention center and have it at a time when more people can show up.
Okay.
You folks are getting paid.
Your, your time's up, sir.
Okay.
And I will answer that one question for you. We have had, at nighttime, nobody showed up except our employees, and that cost us-
Well, I can tell you, at the convention center, when this young lady was involved, there was one or two people at that one. Keep that in mind.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Hall, if you can stay after, we can answer that question. We can get you the figures and show you the Western Park and that.
It is available. It's in our budget, and that, the budget is public, so, but we can help, help you find that and show you.
Uh, Ryan Mattson, not, not presenting, or not talking as a, as a county employee necessarily, just talking about these, the, the salaries. Um, I'm very grateful for the services that our sheriff's office does in the community, and I, I don't want my comment to take anything away from, from what they do, but rather add to the services and duties of the other elected officials. Um, I've had the great privilege of working with them over the past 14 years, and I know that they do a great job. It doesn't seem fair that a pay plan, granted, was put in under another commission, benefits one elected office and not another. Other elected officials have certifications, get awards, they see, um, they see benefits in, in other areas but are not allowed the same potential increases as another, and I, I feel like that is an area that needs to be addressed and was attempted to be addressed many times under a prior commission and was never allowed to be. Um, but yet, now it's okay to do 3% across the board except for some, um, based on a pay plan, but yet there is no pay plan for other elected offices.
Thank you. Over to you, sir. You're adjourned. You're adjourned, thank you.